Good evening and welcome to tonight's Saco City Council meeting for Monday, March 27, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Recognition of all members present this evening. Marshall Counselor Archer will be a few minutes late, but he will be joining us. And with the exception of Mayor Doyle, with Deputy Mayor McPhail presiding. If you all join me with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic always to stand for a nation, for our rights, for physical liberty and justice.
Thank you. Tonight, under general, we have a very special recognition this evening, and we would like to recognize the Thornton Academy Girls Swim Team. The girls were first placed at the South Southwestern Conference Championship held at the Cape Elizabeth High School on February 11, 2023. This was the first time the Thornton Academy Girls Team had won the championship, this championship meet. In prior years of 2020, uh, 2004 and 2010, they were second place. They have also placed third over multiple seasons. In this meet, the girls had over 85% best times. Kenzie Lowry set the 50-yard freestyle school record, and it took the entire team scoring its strategic places throughout the meet to be successful in this achievement. Monday, on Monday, February 20, the Thornton Girls Team placed third overall at the Class A State Championship held at Bowden College. The 200-yard medley relay of Ally LaFieber, Bella Rochelle, Nora Freeman, and Kenzie Lowry set a new Thornton Academy school record. We do have the girls here with us, as well as Assistant Coach Tammy Cody, Assistant Coach Lynn Stewart, and Head Coach Kathy Leary. Um, I believe we have all of the girls' presence here. We have Captain Bella Rochelai, sorry if that's pronounced wrong, Captain Kenzie Lowry, Juliana Valley, Jordan Anderson, Nora Freeman, Lena Jacob, Ally LaFieber, Anna LaFieber, Helena Rempel, and Maya Duque. And we would like to wish you guys the best of congratulations and I'll very proudly honor you.
I also just wanted to mention on behalf of our Parks and Rec Department, we are always looking for lifeguards. So if anyone is interested in guarding this summer, please see Orion Summer in the back. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, and item number five on tonight's agenda is Committee Correspondence to Council. Are there any committee correspondents? Okay, not seeing any. We move on to item number six, which is Public Comment. We have one speaker signed up, and that is David Plaven. Please approach the bench, and please remember, state your name and address for the record and three minutes.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McPhail. Um, my name is David Plaven. Live at 36 Lower Beach Road in Saco. I'm also the Vice President of SOS Saco Bay, and apparently I'm going to still be a member of the Shoreline Commission unless you vote otherwise. But I just wanted to thank the city for co-sponsoring our Saco Bay Symposium, which was held here last Friday. We had an awesome turnout of 19 panelists of all sorts of varying degrees of expertise. It was extremely informative, and I just wanted to mention a couple highlights. Obviously, the $2 million that we're trying to get through Susan Collins so the Army Corps can begin the design phase of that project is very important. We're optimistic that that will happen. When it will happen, of course, is another question. And also, another positive is that Lori Gramlick, State Representative from Old Orchard Beach, has introduced a legislation which I believe has already left committee and will likely pass that will enable easier permitting to do protection and restoration of dunes, which is going to be extremely important since we also learned that the damage from the December storm to our dunes was immense and, uh, and very concerning, something that we, that I asked, we should probably take a look at. Um, we also had a dredge report. We're doing well with the dredge. Um, but the biggest negative, or the only negative, in my opinion, was that the, you know, that the Army Corps remains the gorilla in the room. Um, we were told, though, that the temporary project manager might be willing to come to Saco to meet with city officials. So I would hope that City Administrator Kainrath, Council Berman, um, and maybe the federal reps can get together with her. We really need to get her up here, and we need to get moving on this, as we only hear terms like "soon" or "we're working on it." Um, it should be, should be reminded to them that this is part of the Water Resources Development Act of 2022, and that includes provisions directing the Corps to expedite the completion of several ongoing studies and projects that are critical to coastal and inland flood risk mitigation, navigation, and ecosystem restoration. So I ask that the city take an aggressive stance, get the Corps up here, get some answers as to when we might start to see some, some tangible results from them. Remind them, too, that we've been waiting 16 years since the initial money was, was appropriated by the United States Congress back in 2007. So we've waited long enough. As a member of SOS and the Shoreline Commission, we would do anything to help move this along. Thank you.
Thank you, David. If there are any other members of the public that wish to speak to council, please approach the bench. Not seeing any residents to be recognized. Uh, we move on to item number seven, Approval of the Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of March 20, 2022, 23?
So moved.
Motion by Council Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion approves 6-0. Okay, next on the agenda, we have item number eight, Consent Items. There are four consent items this evening. A, Employee Handbook Update. B, Confirm the Mayor's Appointment to the Shoreline Commission, Mark Barassa. C, Confirm the Mayor's Reappointments to the Shoreline Commission, David Plaven and John Wiggington. D, Confirm Mayor's Appointment to the Arts Commission, Bruce Edwards and Marie O'Brien. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gunn? Uh, Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to approve the consentant items, 6-0. Okay, now we move on to Action Items, number nine on the agenda. First presentation that we have this evening is the February Budget Update presented by Director Salas.
Before Glaughes begins the budget update, I just wanted to make mention, and you probably all have noticed by now, and we did field a lot of calls and talked to a lot of folks, but tax bills this year were about two weeks later than usual in getting out, and that was due to a immunis upgrade we had this year and a delay in printing. So if you noticed, they were a couple weeks later, and this was mentioned in Glaughes's budget update. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. The due date is this Friday, and everything has gone smoothly. And again, that was due to immunis upgrade this year and some delays in printing. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Welcome to the Fiscal 2024 Budget Presentation. Uh, in the agenda, it lists the Fiscal Year 2023 Budget Update because, of course, every year when I do the Fiscal Year Budget Presentation, I start with an update for the numbers through Fiscal Year 2023, and that will be through February. After I do a year-to-date update, I will move into sort of a general refresher on the budget process, what's been going on behind the scenes internally with city staff, and then what the next steps are for council and the public in the budget process. Then I'll present some context for the FY 2024 Budget, some economic trends that we've seen, strategic prioritization, et cetera. And then I will turn it over to City Administrator Kainrath for the city administrators' portion of the presentation. So, an update of Fiscal Year 2023, that's our current fiscal year through February. The City of Saco ended February in a strong position. Unassigned fund balance remained at 15.15% of adopted budget, and cash available for operations was $9,589,937 as of February 28, 2023. Together with investments, the city's cash position totaled $27,589,937 as of February 28, 2023. Now, operating use of fund balance through February was $2 million. This was largely due, as City Administrator Kainrath mentioned, to a shift in the receipt of tax payments. Typically, we start to see tax payments flowing in in February. Receipt of tax payments was shifted mostly, largely to March, as the tax bills were printed on March 8th with a due date of March 31, 2023. Receipts have been robust through the last couple of days, and we anticipate to be right in line with forecasts by the end of this month. On the expenses side, capital projects, communications, county tax, finance, fire and ambulance, fringe benefits, information technology, insurance, parks and rec, public works, school transfers, supported entities, and general transfers were all considered on target because they were within 5% of forecasts. We have some pretty big departments there, and it's good to see that we are tracking overall right on target. Expenses overall were 1% behind forecast, or $627,130 behind forecast. Among those departments that are a little ahead or behind, assessing was 15% behind forecast. The department is working to use up additional available contracted services funds with GIS services, as well as extra time for staff to assist in wrapping up this year's commitment. City administration is 7% behind forecast. The department has just joined a regional services coalition, which will spend out much of the available budget under dues and membership. Computer software was budgeted a little bit high this year for Zoom licenses, which the city is not currently using. That line item has been shifted to council for the coming budget. City clerk is 15% behind forecast. General assistance contributions are tracking 43% behind forecast. Director Hughes and I work together to check with the state, and the city can still anticipate to receive 70% compensation from the state even with the higher rates from the general Portland area in our general assistance ordinance. Contingency is 44% behind budget. Tax abatements and senior tax rebates are both tracking behind budget. Council is 27% behind forecast. Miscellaneous expenses, travel and training, are all a little bit behind. Human resources is tracking 7% ahead of forecast. The department has had some wage adjustments and continues to make use of consulting services on an as-needed basis related largely to employee investigations. Future training and consulting services will be paid out of contingency to assist in keeping this department under budget through the end of the year. Planning is 25% behind forecast. The department has considerable funds available under contracted services. We anticipate that the funds will be used to make final payment on the now-approved comprehensive plan, as well as to be a local match for anticipated grant funding related to the Portland Roads of Area Plan. Police Department is 13% behind forecast. The department does have several open positions currently. Net of overtime base pay is about $200,000 underspent. The department is proactively working on some different recruitment techniques, and in addition to the underspent on base pay, there's $178,202 remaining available under the software line, most of which was designated for the IMC CAD RMS project, the external assessment. The department is reviewing the draft assessment in order to come up with next steps for the next fiscal year. Solicitor is 19% behind forecast. Use of the city solicitor has been lower than in recent years, but the city does anticipate to fully expend this line by year's end. Are there any questions on expenses?
Do we have any questions for Director Salas? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McPhail. Um, the senior tax rebate is falling behind forecast?
So it's below budget?
Okay.
Because the rebate is issued in July prior to the initial bill print of taxes.
So it's not reflective of lack of usage? It's just a timing issue?
No, it is underutilized for this year. We had about the same number of applicants as last year, maybe a couple more, but this year it was a one-to-one match to the property tax fairness credit as opposed to the 2X match we had last year. So the amount distributed was about $45,000.
And as I, as I recall, last year, we had a fairly active communication piece. Is that still in play?
We could certainly circle back on a communications campaign. I think that initial campaign was about the launch of the program, making sure that we targeted all residents that qualified. Um, we had a symposium, as I recall, to sort of spread awareness. Those who enroll in the program typically proactively receive the paperwork again so they can re-enroll every year, and the paperwork is made available in City Hall. But we could certainly circle back on some other ideas.
I think, given the audience, I think, as long as we make an effort to get the communications out, I think that would be a good idea.
Any other questions?
Okay, not seeing any.
Great. Okay, so pivoting over to revenues. Uh, revenues were a bit slow in February, primarily, as we discussed, this was due to a shift in tax receipts from February to March. Capital projects, transfers, communications, which is our cable franchise, fire, ambulance, parks and rec, planning, and police revenues were all on target because they were within 5% of forecast. Uh, building revenues, we are seeing less than zero revenues to date. Uh, this has to do with significant write-off of rental payments that were not received. This has made rental revenue low, and in the negative year-to-date, the problematic tenants are no longer in the property in question, and we are looking at some alternatives for that use of space. City clerk revenues, 18% behind forecast. Again, this relates to general assistance distributions, which have been lower than forecasted. So state reimbursements are also behind forecast. Code enforcement permit revenues, 11% behind forecast. Um, we, we have seen some lower building permits than forecasted. However, the department did recently receive a $75,000 payment for a large project, and therefore revenues are on track through March. So again, it's more of a shift in receipts versus an overall slowdown in permit activity. Finance revenues are 21% behind forecast. Tax lien interest is behind forecast. This is largely a result of lower interest rates, which were capped at 4% by the state of Maine. Next year, the state has raised the maximum interest rate back to 8%, and so those fees should be more in line next year. Interest earnings, $400,324 to date. The city is on track to beat its previous best year for interest earnings, which was fiscal year 2019, when interest earnings were $584,000. There's also an additional unreported market valuation growth on our investments of another $144,000. Public Works revenues, which are primarily vehicle excise, are 8% ahead of forecast. Increased MSRP on motor vehicles have boosted excise revenue. As many of you, I'm sure, are familiar, because you have to pay it, the state of revenue sets a rate on the MSRP. So as MSRP's rise on motor vehicles, so does the related excise tax. Real and personal property is 24% behind forecast. Again, tax revenue shifted from February to March. State assistance was 16% ahead of forecast. State revenue sharing has been, once again, more than budgeted, thanks to being fully funded by the state and robust sales. Tax revenues driven by inflation. And then under unallocated, we have excess funds of $16,899. These are related to a deposit on an escrow account, and finance is working with planning to move those funds where they belong. On the topic of grants, the city has booked $17,313 in qualified grant expenditures in the general fund and $75,239 in qualified grant expenditures in all other funds. That total does not include ARPA, since ARPA is sort of its own thing. Are there any questions on revenues?
Any additional questions? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you.
Great.
So next up, item B, we have the Fiscal Year 2024 City Budget Presentation, and that will be presented by Director Salas and City Administrator Kainrath.
Great, thank you. So like I mentioned, I'm going to lead off this first section of the Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Presentation, talking about the process, strategic planning, the economic context, and then I'll be turning it over to City Administrator Kainrath to present the details of his budget. So, we're going to lead off, as I mentioned, with an overview of the budget process. For those of you who've been through multiple budget cycles, this information may be very familiar to you, but for the sake of those members of the public that may only tune into these sorts of presentations once per year, or who may be watching a budget presentation for the first time, I wanted to provide an overview of how the budget is made. So first question, what is a municipal budget? Let's start with the basics. A municipal budget is all the expenses and revenues that the City of Saco needs to provide quality services to its citizens for a full fiscal year. What is a fiscal year? The city's fiscal year is July 1st to June 30th. The year of the year is the last day of the year. So, for example, fiscal year 2024 goes from July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024. What is the property tax rate? The city calculates its citizens' taxes by multiplying the tax rate by the property value. You might hear us discuss the mill rate. What is the mill rate? The mill rate is the property tax. The mill rate is the property tax rate per $1,000 of property value. In fiscal year 2023, the mill rate was $18.33. Budget development at the city of Saco occurs in five phases. The first phase is maintenance of effort. During this phase of the budget, the city administrator and budget director work with departments to establish the maintenance of effort budget. Maintenance of effort means doing the same thing this year that we did last year. Now, doing the same thing may cost a little bit more. Why is that? Well, we have cost of living increases that have to be accounted for. There's inflation on our operational costs, and then there may be contracted increases, whether that's step increases in union contracts or step increases in other contracts with vendors that work with the city. Doing the same thing may cost a little bit less. Why is that? Well, one-time expenses from the previous year are excluded because they are generally funded from unassigned fund balance, and we never want to fund ongoing operational expenses with our unassigned fund balance. Additionally, the city of Saco reviews line items with budgets higher than historic averages and works to reduce those budget items and find savings where possible. The maintenance of effort budget is calculated by taking last year's approved budget plus year two of the capital plan, plus contracted increases, plus cost of living increases, minus one-time expenses, minus other savings and potential new revenues. That gets you to your maintenance of effort budget. Phase two of the budget process is the city administrator's budget. During this phase, departments may submit requests to expand services or increase their department budget. The city administrator reviews these requests and determines his final budget. The maintenance of effort budget plus city administrator-approved increases minus other changes or adjustments gets you to the city administrator's budget. Phase three is the budget presentation. That's what we're doing this evening. Finance compiles all of the changes and adjustments and compiles the city administrator's budget book, a printed copy of which you have in front of you this evening. Then the city administrator and budget director present the budget to council. The school superintendent and school finance director also present the school budget. That occurred last Monday evening, March 20th. So for those of you who may be tuning in, who are interested in what the school superintendent presented for his budget, you can review that presentation at the city of Saco's YouTube page, where all council livestreamed recordings are available. Phase four is budget deliberation. Over the next couple of weeks, departments will present their individual budgets to council. The public can view these presentations live and in person or online and offer public comment, whether that be during the open public comment section of each meeting or during the formal public hearing, which is scheduled currently for May 1st, 2023. During this time, council also works with the finance department to draft amendments for any changes they may want to see in the budget. Phase five is budget approval. The council reviews and votes on the fee schedule. This occurs on May 8th. On May 8th, council reviews and votes on the capital plan, council reviews and votes on the school budget, and may amend the school budget at the total amount. Council reviews and votes on the municipal budget. Amendments there should be proposed and approved at the line item level for clarity and transparency. Then finance enters the final budget into our financial system and compiles the approved budget book. That approved budget book is submitted every year to the GFOA. That's the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and the department has, under my tenure, received four awards to date for the last four years. This is a summary of the budget process, as I just laid out. Are there any questions? Okay. All right, next, how to read the budget book. The budget book is around 250 pages long. That can be very intimidating for somebody who may not have opened a budget book recently. So I'm going to walk through what the different sections of the budget book are, so that those who want to open it up and take a look have an idea of where to look for different sorts of information. The first section of the budget book is the letter of transmittal. This is written by the city administrator and is an introduction to his annual budget. It provides an explanation of what was approved in the budget and a general understanding of the city administrator's thoughts in developing the budget. Next is the introduction. The introduction provides a basic overview of the budget process, very similar to the information that I've just presented to you, as well as some instructions for how to read the budget book, what the columns mean, et cetera. Section 1 contains an introduction to the city of Saco, including important demographic information, contact information for our elected officials, both at the local, county, state, and federal level. It also contains contact information for department heads and some other overview information. Section 2 is the fiscal summary. This section contains tables that present an overview of the budget in a couple of different ways. And the intention here is to simply provide citizens or counselors the opportunity to review the budget in a couple of different ways, whatever form of analysis makes the most sense to each individual reader. The section also contains the fee schedule and is also where the city summarizes its full-time equivalent headcount. The last table in the section provides an analysis of the city's unassigned fund balance and where we anticipate to be at year's end. Section 3 is the five-year capital plan, as mandated by Section 4 of the city charter. This is also the section where the city of Saco's bonded debt and capital financing schedules are presented. Section 4 gets into some of the meat of the individual department budgets. Each department has a thoughtfully written introduction that presents an overview of the department, accomplishments for fiscal year 2023, and goals for fiscal year 2024. I definitely recommend reviewing this information. It's a really good way to understand a department, especially in preparation for the departmental presentations as they occur through April. In each departmental section, there are two budget presentations. The first is a table that presents a summary of the departmental budget across 15 categories that are consistent between all departments. This enables the reader to easily compare the budgets of different departments, see where different cost pressures are for those departments along consistent 15 categories. It's also a way to present the departmental budget in a way that fits on a single page. At the end of each departmental section is a line item detail that presents the individual information within each of those categories for those who want to get more into the weeds with that department. Increases approved in the departmental budget are highlighted here as well. Section 5 is for other budgeting units. This section covers those portions of the budget that do not fit nicely into one of the city's 14 departments. It covers such topic areas as contingency, fringe benefits, and supported entities. Because not all supported entities are large enough to warrant a formal presentation to council, we have included for your review one-page letters from every supported entity, providing information about how that supported entity's services complements the city of Saco services and supports our citizens. This section also includes the detailed budget of the dire library. As part of our prior audit, the dire library was identified as a discrete component unit. That means that we report their financials within our annual financial reports, and for that reason, I have included their budget in our budget book as well. Please note when you review the supported entity request letters that the amount requested in the letter may vary from the amount approved in the city administrator's budget. Section 6 is for other governmental funds. The city of Saco maintains a number of governmental funds on its balance sheet for reporting revenues and expenditures related to specific non-tax funding mechanisms with special controls. This section includes summary reports only for those funds with anticipated expenditures or revenues in fiscal year 2024. For a comprehensive list of all of the city of Saco's governmental funds, please see the audited financials. This is also where the planned expenditures for ARPA are presented, as well as the Economic Development Department, and anticipated expenditures related to TIF districts. Something that's new in this year's TIF budget is that we have extended the TIF budget planning process out five years in alignment with our five-year capital plan. This provides a future forward review of anticipated TIF expenditures and revenues and ensures that we have sufficient balance in each of those funds to cover our qualified development projects. Section 7 is the Water Resource and Recovery Department, sometimes referred to as WRRD. WRD revenues and expenditures are reported separately from the general fund because the WRD is a special kind of fund known as an enterprise fund. This is because the amount that users pay into the fund is correlated with the amount they actually use, so you pay for how much water goes down your drain. For this reason, WRD is budgeted and reported more like a private sector enterprise fund. However, council still approves the WRD budget and rates on an annual basis, and for that reason, of course, it is included in the budget book. Are there any questions on the sections of the budget book?
Any questions for Director Salas?
Great.
Proceed.
Okay, so a quick explanation of budget columns. The budget book is printed on legal-sized paper because we wanted to maximize the amount of history that was available for our citizens and counselors to review every year. Fiscal year 2019 actuals through fiscal year 2022 actuals, those are, of course, the history of the actual full-year expenditures for each line item. The fiscal year 2023 current column includes revenue and expenditures year-to-date through February of 2023. And then the fiscal year 2023 approved column is the fiscal year 2023 approved budget as approved by council on May 9th, 2022. It does not include any amendments or roll forward of funds from the previous year. And the reason for that is simply that it's clean is to look at what did a council approve originally for fiscal year 2023 versus what is council anticipating to approve for 2024? The maintenance of effort column, we've talked about that. Maintenance of effort equals the fiscal year 2023 approved budget plus year two of the capital plan, plus contracted increases, plus cost of living increases, minus one-time expenses, minus other savings. That gets you your maintenance of effort budget. The dollar change and percent change columns show the dollar and percent difference between the fiscal year 2023 approved column and the maintenance of effort column. The city administrator's budget equals the maintenance of effort budget plus increases minus other changes. That equals the city administrator's budget. Any changes or adjustments made by the city administrator are reported in the administrators' columns column, administrators' changes column. So maintenance of effort plus your administrator changes, that's your administrator's budget. One note about the budget columns, the columns I've laid out for you here are related specifically to overall reporting and departmental reporting that is in the general fund. For the governmental funds, which don't have this sort of maintenance of effort versus administrator's budget, and for the WRD fund, what you'll see is simply a 2024 budget column. Are there any questions about the columns?
Any questions?
Great. Okay, some tips again for citizens who might be a little bit intimidated opening up this budget book and trying to glean some information from it. One tip is to simply start with the total numbers at the bottom of each table. That gives you a big-picture sense of how the budget is moving from year to year. There are charts and graphs scattered throughout the budget book that provide a visualization of how the numbers are changing or relate to each other. You can use those as a guide. Within each table, look for numbers that are changing the most, your biggest changes. Those are your budget drivers that are the most significant changes affecting where we landed in 2024. I definitely recommend using a highlighter. It's an easy way to sort of remember what things popped out to you as you go through the budget book. And write down your questions. Have a notebook handy, or you can write them down on your computer. Send your questions to budget@sacoMaine.org, and we'll be happy to answer them. And of course, never a bad idea to have a cup of coffee or tea handy while you're reading through it. Are there any questions about the format of the budget book or what I presented so Great. So now we're going to pivot over to the context for our fiscal year 2024 budget. I would like to kick this section off, as I do every year, with a discussion of the cycle of sustainability. The cycle of sustainability is a model I developed a couple of years ago to illustrate the complex interdependency between population growth, property valuation, and tax rates on the cost of municipal service levels. Generally, I found it to be a useful tool for visualizing any strategic challenges to a healthy budget. It also creates a shared language and understanding of the role of budgeting in maintaining a strong community. Once again, this is information that may be very familiar to some of you, but I'm going to walk through it step by step for those who may be tuning in for the first time. The cycle of sustainability starts with the best-in-class city services that we here in the city of Saco are proud to offer our citizens. Things like strong infrastructure, safe neighborhoods, and great schools. In February of 2020, February 27th, 2023, the council prioritized focus areas in order to develop a strategic plan. As I had the previous year, council prioritized financial stability, schools and infrastructure, and economic opportunity. The remaining focus areas were prioritized, as you see on the color wheel, in order clockwise: growth and innovation, livable community, governance, environmental sustainability, transparency and engagement, and organizational excellence. Council goals are now the only strategic planning tool in our toolkit currently. Of course, we have the comprehensive plan, which was also recently approved by the state of Maine just this month. We have the ARPA prioritization exercise, which was conducted in March of 2022, and the citizen satisfaction survey, which was presented to council in the fall. I won't go into the details of this grid and how the different elements of each of these strategic prioritization exercises align. This information is available in the printed budget book, which is also available online for those who would like to go into it in detail. What I will say is, from a 10,000-foot view, I think it's fair to say that certainly along these top five priorities, there is significant synergy between each of these prioritization exercises, and I think it shows that as a community, we're on the right track. So here we have the best-in-class city services as prioritized by city council. Those best-in-class city services drive population growth as more and more people want to move to our great community. Population growth drives rising property values, whether that be new development, residential or commercial, or rising demand for existing inventory. Rising property values drive increase in tax revenue and other revenues, which can then in turn cover the rising cost of our best-in-class city services without the need to increase the property tax rate. And in fact, if you look at the last few years, the property tax rate in the city of Saco has been very stable. This fiscal year has presented, in my experience at least, a unique challenge, and the property values are rising extremely fast. In fact, if you analyze the last two years of property value data, you will find that the city of Saco alone has seen 40% increase in real estate values. The city of Saco did have a real estate valuation adjustment last year that was about 12%, but we are looking at between 28% and 30% additional real estate valuation adjustment in this fiscal year. The challenge is that, under normal circumstances, rising property values would be an indicator of our community's capacity to pay for best-in-class city services. However, we do know, I don't think I have to share with anyone here, that a 30% tax rate would be impossible for those in our community. And in fact, in addition to facing extremely fast real estate valuation growth, our citizens are also facing inflation of 5.5%, while wages up 5.9%, at least just ahead of inflation, certainly struggling to cover that growth in real estate cost. In consideration of the cost pressures that our citizens are facing, administration and finance has worked together with our seniors staff to put forward a very reasonable net tax levying increase of just 2.56%. In other words, the absolute amount of taxes that our citizens will pay for municipal services is up just 2.56% over last year. Now, city costs are up 5% in alignment with inflation and recognizing the wage pressures that our community is facing. However, we've been able to offset those cost increases with 1.7 million in interest earnings and non-tax revenues. Let's talk a little bit- Let's talk a little bit about those revenues and how we've been able to offer such a reasonable tax increase in this fiscal year. 41% of that 1.7 million is interest earnings, so the city of Saco is set to have what I believe is a record-setting year for interest earnings, anticipating $860,000 in interest earnings to offset the tax rate. The next biggest piece of that is state revenue sharing. Again, the state has committed to a full 5% in the governor's biennial budget. That combined with inflation-based increases on sales tax means that we are anticipating strong support from the state to offset property tax revenues. In addition to these large items, we have some increase from public works. Again, that's the motor vehicle excise, parks and recs, some fee adjustments to reflect wage increases. In partnership with Quick Med Claims, our billing partner, we have seen significant improvement in ambulance receipts, and so we are anticipating to be able to flow back more ambulance receipts to offset the cost of our fire department. And lastly, in looking for as tight a budget as possible, the city administrator and I discussed the potential of selling 12 School Street and using that revenue to offset. Now, I know that there was discussion recently if that's the best path, but I think it's important for councils to know that in presenting 2.56% net tax levy, we were factoring in the sale of some property. Are there any questions about the revenues and how we've worked to put those together for this budget?
Any questions at this point? Not seeing any?
So a couple more challenges the city is facing. Once again, we are experiencing significant diversion of tax revenues to our TIF districts. This has to do, again, when you have a 30% property valuation adjustment, those properties sheltered in tax districts then have their taxes and that increase flowing over. And then we are also experiencing utilities cost increases that are far outpacing inflation. So let's talk a little bit about how we worked to mitigate these impacts. The first is, we are recommending that we return funds from TIF districts that cannot be spent on qualified projects. This is an allowable function. City council can enact a percentage of TIF revenues to be returned to the general fund. This mitigates the risk associated with significant valuation increase in our TIF districts. Without this council action, we anticipate another 2.8 million in tax revenue transfers to TIF districts that would then be rolled into the municipal mill rate. And so we're recommending that council take that action, and we will be working to prepare those motions as part of the budget approval process. Separate from the transfer back to the general fund, we still are seeing a 7.62% increase in TIF transfers. This basically just annualizes what we had last year. That is largely offset by capital savings, where we've shifted qualified capital projects to our TIF districts. Personnel is up 6.3%. In total dollar amount, personnel is the biggest piece of the puzzle, biggest piece of the pie when it comes to absolute dollar increase year-over-year on our expenses. However, personnel cost increases are in line with inflation, which nationally is at 6.4%. Utilities are up 19.96%, again, far outpacing inflation. The city is experiencing the same challenges as our residents when it comes to electricity rates. However, we have locked in a four-year contract, so we are at least stabilizing our utility costs for the next couple of years, while the city can explore alternatives for energy source sources. Operations up just 2.3, 2.03%, so we've kept that operations piece of the budget really tight. Are there any questions about this? Yeah?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that the TIF transfer piece on that graph. You're suggesting that if we engage in the transfers of TIF funds back to the general fund, as you guys recommend, there'll still be an increase of 7.62%? And if we do not, then it would be an increase of 58.56%? Is that the way to read that?
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other additional questions? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so we're going to kind of cycle back through the phases of the budget and just talk very specifically about what is built into the numbers that you see in your budget book. So once again, maintenance of effort, that's last year's approved budget plus year two of the capital plan, plus contracted increases, plus cost of living increases, minus one-time expenses, minus other savings or new revenues. That's your maintenance of effort budget. So what did we look at when compiling the maintenance of effort budget? As I mentioned, the capital plan netted savings of $160,000 with a shift to TIF districts of qualified projects. Some contracted increases that we dealt with, heating fuels up 4%, gas, diesel, and electricity all up around 50%. We had some increases in IT and finance software costs. We did have an increase in investment services that is, of course, offset by our interest earnings, but we do pay a fee on our investment balance to our partners at Morgan Stanley. Insurance is up 6%. Contracted waste removal and contracted garage costs up 8%. And TIF transfers are up 8% as we presented on the previous slide. A little bit about cost of living increases. So the city administrator is recommending in his budget a 5% increase for our non-union employees. There were a couple of different reasons for that. First, it's primarily to keep pace with our partners, our neighbors. We are seeing between 4% and 6% increases in some of our neighbors in the area. Additionally, the city of Saco analyzed social security COLA increases over the last five years, comparing our 3% year-over-year to what the COLAs had been at Social Security Administration. The delta there was also 5%. So this seemed like the right number just to keep pace for employees. Additionally, in the, for union employees, we've matched whatever the approved union contracts were for year two or year three, depending on where that contract is. And fringe benefits are up 6% overall. Some one-time items that were removed, starter funds for the police, fire, IMC, CAD, RMS project. City appropriated $250,000 from unassigned fund balance for that in fiscal year 23, so that's been removed from the budget. Also, the general fund contribution for the public safety radio project, that came out, that was $100,000 from unassigned fund balance. And in fact, the city of Saco has been awarded $667,000 in grant funding, congressionally-directed spending, to offset the equipment portion of that project. So the city is able to fund that project in whole between what was appropriated in fiscal year 2023 and what the city has been awarded from Congress. Some additional savings in the budget and revenue increases, like I'd mentioned, new interest earnings from investment, $864,709. Fees adjustments, $88,170. We're seeing excise tax increase, $137,850. And state revenue sharing up just a little bit over $500,000. Are there any questions on the maintenance of effort budget?
Any questions?
Great. So phase two is the city administrator's budget. City administrator's budget equals maintenance of effort budget plus increases minus other changes. And to present the details of that, I'm going to turn it over to city administrator Kenra.
All right, thank you, Glennis. So to start off with, we have some smaller, under $10,000 approved increases for organizational leadership development, contingency for personnel, some increased hours for departmental support, software supplies, software enhancements. And lastly, this is a savings to some of our residents, removal of online fees for e-check payments. So headcount, this is always an interesting topic, one of a lot of interest from the public and, of course, our staff back here. This year, we have, again, some fairly limited headcount increases to put forward. First, two firefighters in our fire department. As you know, we had an MRI report study done probably five years ago now, talking about appropriate staffing levels based on our population and call volume. This is an effort to continue to get us up to that level where we should be. Call volume, as you know, is not decreasing. Our public safety folks on both sides, police and fire, continue to face increasing calls for service. This keeps pace with that, with that need. So two firefighters in our fire department. The second, headcount increase is in our communications department, taking our communications coordinator, Alex, from part-time to full-time. This is offset also with cable franchise revenue. As you know, Alex is doing a tremendous job. We also have increasing need from the public, from staff, from boards and committees for more service from our communications department. And we want to be, we want to be putting forward more efforts toward transparency and communications with the public. And we're discussing, for example, getting planning board meetings up and televised, and also maybe some other committees also. So anyway, the need is there, so that position, part-time to full-time, offset by cable franchise fees, and that will be, I think, a very needed addition to our team also. So that's it for headcount, though. Again, pretty simple this year. So other increases, department budgets were intended to align with council goals in the comp plan, as Glennis had mentioned. We did really make a considered effort to continue to tie this budget, and when we developed this budget, back into the comp plan, which was just done, a lot of work went into that, and also the council goals process, which we did. We don't want these documents to be formulated, talked about, put on a shelf, and doing nothing. So we, I think we're pretty strong in our focus here of trying to tie this back to those documents. So you see some council goals here, some specific projects, just to highlight a few, financial support for grants, a working group of $15,000. We'll talk more about that in a minute. Contracted services in support of a citywide revow. We'll also talk more about that, but this is the year, I believe, we're going to really push to do that revow. It's been recommended the last number of years, but as the market stabilized a little bit since the peak of COVID, the time to press go on the revow and bring equity across all sectors is probably this coming year. And so we'll, we'll see that coming up. Fund balance. We talk about being very judicious in our use of fund balance. This year, again, we have a fairly limited use of about $335,000 in fund balance. Just a few items. One, a traffic infrastructure plan. This is the general fund piece of it, $25,000. You see the citywide revow, it's going to be 250, and we have some others there totaling about $60,000. So again, a pretty judicious use of fund balance for this year. Now we'll get into some numbers. On the expense side, you see the city going from $35,700 up to $38,196. Schools up $29,121 to this year, $31,376. County up just a little bit. Overall, we're up $66,198 to $79,43. On the revenue side, and again, I want to mention this point again, the city revenues, $11,499 to $13,516. As Glennis mentioned, over a million dollars of that, or about a million dollars of that is due to the work of us engaging our new investment advisor, and that's, that's a tremendous pocket of revenue to come in that really, as we talked about, allows us to keep that net municipal tax levy down to where it is. So good revenues coming in on the city side. You see fund balance down a little bit from '23, and our overall tax revenue is strong also, $54,189 to $57, just over $57 million. So total revenues up about $4 million. So the mill rate, what's going to happen with the mill rate? You just heard about unprecedented, and it really is growth in the real estate market and our evaluation. So with that, the city mill rate will drop from 8.09 in fiscal year '23 to 6.32. It's being proposed in '24. The schools, $9.79, down to $8.15, and the county down a little bit, about nine cents. So our total mill rate is anticipated to drop from 18.33 to 14.83. And again, we've had tremendous growth in valuation with the real estate market going where it is. And again, highlighting city revenues have been, have been strong. So this is probably the most important slide to highlight. This is what I think people, the public, if you're watching, should be most concerned with, because this illustrates what your bottom-line tax bills, that number will be doing. So on the city side, 2.56%. So the net municipal tax levy increase for the city side, again, pretty good, 2.56%. The schools, 7.74%, and the county, 3%. So where that ends up overall, as this stands right now, as proposed, is a 5.36% increase. So fairly, a fairly sizable increase still overall. We had some communication, I'll say, with the schools today. I think they are going to be coming forward with some additional savings on their side to hopefully drive down that number overall. I'll say it would be, it would be nice if that number were more, didn't start with a five, at least in the fours, but something a little more appealing. But we're presenting the city budget tonight, and I will say, on the city side, we're presenting 2.56, and we're fairly, fairly proud of that. So the pie chart, how this breaks down. So the schools, 55%, the city, 43%. This has shifted a little bit in the schools' direction this year over last year. Next, we'll talk about ARPA. You're all familiar with the ARPA funding and process by now. The city of Saco did receive about $2.1 million in ARPA last year. So we engaged, I think, a really good process that involved citizens, involved council, involved staff. It was an inclusive process that really involved the examination of a lot of needs. And I'll also say, I think, you know, if you read the newspaper, we are ahead of many of our peers out there in putting together a very, a good process, and I think an inclusive process, because there are municipalities out there right now that are still kind of fighting about what to do with their ARPA money. It's a little, it's a little late. So kudos to us, to our staff, council, and the public for participating in that process and getting ARPA funds really all allocated. You also see we have about $6,000 left unallocated for ARPA. Here are some of the priorities and how it all shook out. These are some of the actual projects, as you've seen, with ARPA funds in fiscal '23 and '24, a fairly comprehensive list that I think balances a lot of competing priorities and makes some very strong investments in our community, in our city, and in our staff. Grants. As you know, grants have been a priority. I've talked about going after grants with a bit more gusto than we have in the past, and we're doing that. So we put together, I mentioned also, there's a staff working group, a grants committee, a cross-departmental group, I'll add, of a number of different departments, working to research some grants. In this budget, there is probably proposed $15,000 to support their efforts, which I think is a small change and money well spent. So sort of the upside-down pyramid, or really it's more of a funnel, I guess. Right, Glennis? It's a funnel? It's a funnel. Potential grants, they've looked at 27 different grants totaling $5.9 million. Qualified grants, there were 20 totaling $4 million. And the ones we're really going to go after and put some time into, there's eight grants identified totaling $1.6 million. As you know, one of the biggest things with, with going after grants is they can be time-consuming, writing the narratives and the whole process, but this committee has identified eight and $1.6 million that we're going to be pursuing. And I think, hopefully, doing a lot more with grants in the near future than maybe we have been in the last number of years. This, I think this behooves us to do this. There's lots of money floating around out there, you know, let's go get it. This is also another nice opportunity for staff to work together, cross-department to work together in finding some of these opportunities, putting together some of these projects and going after them. So again, as I said, we really tried to keep the comprehensive plan and the council goals process really at our forethought. And so this is, again, the comprehensive plan and how we sort of comport with some of the comp plan. This annual budget meets policies laid out in the fiscal section of the comp plan when we talk about strategic capital planning, when we talk about going after grants, when we talk about doing a revow, and also shared capital costs with our neighbors. One example is the pedestrian bridge that we're talking about with Bitford and some of the money we have to put upfront on engineering toward, toward that effort. And again, council goals. We see some council goals here and some actual dollar figures and initiatives in support of those efforts, financial stability. There's $305,000 in new initiatives there. There's $1,007,000 in new non-tax revenues. Again, to highlight those, those new revenues, schools and infrastructure, some capital projects, economic opportunity, $478,000 there, growth in innovation, $97,000, and about $700,000 toward livable community. So again, we're not putting these, these exercises we do on the shelf and collecting dust. We are using about, using them, we are talking about them, and we're going to keep them at the front of our minds. So timeline going forward, April 3rd, you're going to see some presentations from WRRD, the police department, economic development, and the TIF budget, city clerk, parks and rec, code enforcement. On April 10th, we'll have Saco Main Street, the Dyer Library, BSOB, age-friendly, public works, and the capital plan, and... Fire, and Administration. At April 24th, we'll have Saco Main Street, the Dyer Library, BSOB, age-friendly, Public Works, and the Capital Plan and Assessing. On May 1st, we'll have our public hearing. We'll review budget motions and amendments, and we'll have some discussion, and then we'll wrap the whole process up on May 8th with the final budget adoption on the city and school side. So let me just say, you know, putting a budget together obviously is an exercise in competing interests and limited resources. It's not an easy process. It's not a process that makes everyone happy all of the time, but it's a necessary process. I think what we've put forward here today is a really responsible budget when we talk about 2.56%, but it's also a budget, I think, that invests in our community, it invests in our people, our staff, and I think it also invests in our future. So I think we're very proud to put forward this budget to you today, again, highlight 2.56%. I want to thank Glenn for all of her work on this. You can obviously see her interest and passion and her ability in doing this work. And I also want to thank our staff, who are all sitting back here today. They put a tremendous amount of time also into not just their daily jobs, but putting together collectively, all of us. We've tried to do this even more as a group, as a team, the past couple of years, in putting this forward. So there you have FY '24, and we're happy to take any further questions, and I'll let the process go on from here. So thank you.
Thank you both for that and all of your efforts, as well as the city staff. Any questions? Councilmember?
Easy questions here, ones that involve like math and stuff like that. What a gloss.
That's so much a question. More of a comment. Really, congratulations and thank you for coming with the 2.56% increase. That's below what I expected, and I think shows a really lot of hard work for a city. I was having dinner with a city councillor from a neighboring city the night, who asked how our budget was going. I said, I was really worried about the effects of inflation on our budget, and I was hoping, after the school presentation, that our first number could be somewhere around five, although I was fearful. And he replied that if we could get our first number to be five, it would be a coup and an amazing accomplishment.
We're going to do better than that.
And so, so here we are, and you've done that on your first budget, and so thank you. It's a real accomplishment, and I appreciate your fiscal responsibility and really considering the taxpayer.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McPhail. I'm going to join in the kudos to you and staff, equally impressed with the sharp pencil, and appreciate all the effort that went into that. I also want to acknowledge how important it is to be seeking out non-tax revenue sources. And you've highlighted three in this budget that, you know, make a dramatic difference in how we fund our city services. So between the grants, the interest income that we're earning, and the ambulance service, you know, it can be a fairly low-lying fruit if we put our mind to it and our efforts. I'm also very impressed, not only with the budget, but other things I'm seeing at City Hall, with the coalescing of departments. I really commend you for giving your staff the opportunity to kind of work with each other and bring their respective strengths to the table. It's like, you know, managing a team. You have strengths in each of your individual staff members. If you bring them to the table and let them really blossom, I think we see really good things come from that. So I want to commend you on those two levels.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Not going to go into in-depth, but I was expecting around a 7%. That's what I was preparing myself for, based on what I've seen going on. So to see the total of 5%, which obviously took a lot of work from you to get to 2.74, if I remember correctly, so I just wanted to say, good job. That is what this council tasks you. We task you a lot of, task you a lot of things to do, but one of them is this time of the year is, that's where I've always focused, where most of the effort is, and you've really shown yourself for this budget, getting it to that in our economy as we speak. So, good job.
Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and congratulations to you both and to all the staff on this, and once a solid presentation. I look forward to the department presentations the next couple of weeks. In terms of the grants, because we know that state revenue share is never going to be one of those things that's a given, depending on what happens in Augusta, so therefore, chasing after grants, I think, is a solid idea. In terms of the $15,000 that's allocated here in the budget, if we can find savings and some other items going forward in the budget, would be prudent to put more money into searching for grants, because how is actually that 15, for the public's benefit and mine for that matter, spent in terms of looking after those grants, of finding those grants, I should say?
Yeah, it's a great thought. I think we're going to start with $15,000 as some seed money, you know, toward this effort. In future years, is it more? It very well could be. But Glenn, do you want to talk more about, you know, specifics? Is the $15,000 enough? Is that helping you guys out? And maybe in future years, we may see an increase there.
Yeah, I think the idea was generally to get some seed money and then to analyze the competing priorities of the grants working group and see if $15,000 could go towards a piece of software, you know, contracted staffing support. There's not a specific idea. It's really just about having some funding for the grants working group and then allowing that group to decide, hey, what makes the most sense? And then the intention for the group, our goal in the coming years to identify, how is this working? What are the needs of the grant? Is there an opportunity to staff a grants position at the city of Saco? Or if there isn't a need for that, where do I identify the needs to then expand what we're doing beyond sort of trying to do it as a side, as a side project to our other competing responsibilities?
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments?
All right, thank you all.
Thank you both. Okay, next on the agenda this evening, Item C, we have the final reading, Chapter 83, Cost Recovery Ordinance Revision and Draft Fee Schedule Updates, and that is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Chapter 83, Cost Recovery, outlines the city's authority to charge applicant city staff review time and consultant fees necessary to conduct development reviews and post-approval compliance monitoring. These proposed revisions better align with Saco's current ordinance provisions, citing chapters instead of application types. Certain staff titles and definitions have been corrected, and several updates have been made to the draft ordinance and draft fee schedule to better reflect the planning department's and financial department's procedures. The Economic Development Department's fee schedule has also been separated into its own appendix. These draft revisions are part of a larger standard operating procedures initiative, and their visions are the result of collaborative work between the planning department and the finance department. Planning and finance departments work collaboratively on these proposed revisions, and as such, staff from both departments recommends approval. I move to approve the final reading of the Chapter 83, Cost Recovery Ordinance and Revisions and Draft Fee Schedule Updates.
Motion has been read. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Burman?
Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Johnston, I'm sorry. Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Not seeing any questions. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Burman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Item D on the agenda is the final reading, Contract Zone Request for 265 North Street. And that is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Ted Arcand of Arcand Properties requests a contract zone agreement with the city of Saco to establish a commercial catering kitchen and to host onsite events per proposed contract zone provisions. Purpose of this project is to relocate Blue Elephant Catering from its current temporal square location to 265 North Street and to expand its existing operations. Mr. Arcand plans only to make interior alterations to the existing building at this time. At its January 3rd, 2023 meeting, the planning board found the contract zone application complete and scheduled a public hearing. At its January 17th meeting, the planning board heard from Mr. Arcand about the proposal and opened the public hearing. After receiving public comment, the board closed the public hearing and voted 5-0 to forward a positive recommendation to the city council. City council reviewed this request during new business on February 13th and completed its first reading on March 6th. Council's public hearing was held on March 20th. Staff has prepared amendments as requested by city council. Planning board forward a positive recommendation regarding this request to the city council. I move to amend the 265 North Street Contract Zone Agreement as follows. Section 3, subsection A, shall now read, outdoor onsite events will be limited to weekend evenings, which are Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. Section 3, subsection C, shall now read, outdoor onsite events are limited to a maximum of 75 attendees and must end by 10:00 p.m. And add Section 3.1 to read, applicant shall pay a traffic impact fee of $21,425 to the city of Saco prior to building permit issuance for interior renovations. I move to approve the final reading of the 265 North Street Contract Zone Agreement as amended this evening.
Second.
Motion has been read by Counselor Gunn, second by Counselor Johnston.
Do we have a comment on that?
I'm sorry?
I just want to talk briefly to the Section 3, what is the traffic impact fee?
Yep. We need to get the motion approved first.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Madam? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Two weeks ago, three weeks ago, when I had, I brought up concerns around noises, and Counselor Johnston had identified Article VI, the Good Neighbor Performance Standards, I had thought about putting language into this contract zone. I've read it, I've spoken with the applicant. I'm okay with just not adding it as a specific item and just, the ordinance can stand as it is and apply it to the Good Article VI standards. So I'll make, I'm making no amendments to it from what I initially stated.
Counselor Burman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'm curious about the traffic impact fees, $21,425. Where that number came from, how it was chosen? I'm wondering if there's a city staff member who can enlighten us on that.
Yep, we do have Planning Director Prescott. She was here. She has information on that for us.
Hello, how are you this evening? Is the question about how we came to the traffic impact fee? So we're more set up to look at traffic impact fees when we do conditional use and site plan reviews, because we ask specific questions that get us to the traffic impact fee amount. In this case, I went back to the applicant, Ted Arcand, and asked him some specific questions about the property. How we came to it is I reached out to our traffic engineering consultant. The cost per trip in that corridor, we estimated at $4,285 per trip, which seems high. This seemed very high to me as well, but it's based on a cost estimate of Franklin Street signalization at $450,000 for the signalization. I did have Ted Arcand in my office today, because we were kind of running out of time. I didn't want to not have any item for counsel, but I also want to recommend tabling. So he came in this morning, and he expressed to me that he's only going to have seven new employees onsite, so we went off employee count for this. So we recalculated with our traffic engineer, the cost could be $12,855 based on not counting all the employees. So my original estimate considered all the employees, even those that are working in the office.
Sorry, can you repeat that number again, the second number? $12,000? Thank you.
And just so you know, oh.
Patiently waiting down here.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So, this is what I was trying to point out from the beginning. If it's acceptable to Counselor Gunn, I would just suggest a friendly amendment to strike the $21,425 and replace it with $12,855 for that traffic impact fee.
Counselor Gunn?
I think that's a more than reasonable request.
Okay, so we have a friendly amendment to change the third from $21,425 to $12,855. Any additional questions or comments? Counselor Johnston?
I have an additional amendment, but I don't know if you want to deal with this amendment first, instead of having additional amendment to the amendments.
Yeah, we can treat them both separately. I think that'll be the easiest. Okay, roll call vote on the amendment. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Burman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes 6-0. Any additional questions? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Under, or on page two of the CZA, which is page 93 of your packet, I would move to amend Section 2A, which shall now include eating and drinking establishments. Use shall be limited to catering operations as described within the contract zone application. Restaurant and bar uses are not permitted with this contract zone.
So that's the amendment to make restaurants and bar uses not permitted?
Correct.
Or the whole?
That is the sum of it.
Eating and drinking establishments, establishment use shall be limited to catering operations as described within the contract zone application? Restaurant and bar use is not permitted?
Correct.
Okay. Amendment has been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion or comments? Counselor Johnston?
Just as an explanation, while reviewing this, I just had some concerns about the way our current zoning ordinance defines the use of eating and drinking establishments. To clear up any of those concerns, I'd work with staff to ensure that that use of a restaurant or a bar would not be permitted at this site.
Not seeing any questions. Counselor Burman?
Yeah, just to clarify, I understand what you're trying to do, and I think that's great. The purpose is to still allow those both indoor and outdoor onsite events, that would include both food and alcohol being served. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, any additional? Counselor Archer?
Yeah, just more of a comment. So, yeah, I think I'm in agreement with Counselor Johnston, because we're still keeping it as an event venue. It's just not allowing it to become a restaurant in the future. I don't think that's the intent, but we have to clean it up in this contract before we get there. So yeah, it's still going to be an event venue. We'll have dinners, things like that, but done under the catering type of a license, not a restaurant license. Does that sound accurate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions or comments on the amendment? Okay, roll call vote on the amendment only. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Burman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes 6-0. Back to the main motion as amended. Any additional questions or comments? Counselor Johnston?
Just kind of as a side note to counsel, I think, given the increased demand for this use, it may make sense for us to look to define what an event venue is versus, you know, going about this route of trying to define it as we go. know, going about this route of trying to define it as we go and then, of course, applying it to the three dash three or the use table, putting it where this use would belong. Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? Councillor Berman?
Yeah, madam deputy mayor, I believe the applicant would like to add to the conversation a little bit and I'd be curious to hear what he has to say if that's allowable.
Good evening, Mr. Arkand, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening council, and first I'd like to just say, it's pretty exciting, I actually seen on the agenda final notice, which was great since we've gone through this, we've started this process quite a little bit, I want to thank current city council and current city staff and the planning board, everyone's been great to work with and so forth. The amendments in terms of what councillor Johnson proposed and so forth, we're completely okay with. As councillor Archer said, that our intention is to have an event placed here just for catering and so forth, we have no intention to open a restaurant or bar, so we're completely okay with that. The one thing I wanted to address was the traffic impact fee and I know that twelve thousand five, eight hundred dollars doesn't seem like a lot of money with you guys talking about budget and all the money that's going through there, but being a small business person, it still is a lot of money to ourself and Blue Elephant. So, we wanted to just talk about whether there's a way for us to offset that fee in any way. It's my understanding, and you're going to have to forgive me, my education is just going, is coming into this, is that the, when, if I can refer to my notes, the, it's common practice from what I understand that when, when an applicant is applying for this contract zone, that they show some type of public benefit for that contract zone. I think I understand that. I think that's what triggered the, looking at the traffic impact study that triggered the fee. So, I understand that. So, what we wanted to do was just make sure that the council understands the whole project, the historical part of the property and what we bring to the community, not only from a property standpoint, but also from a business standpoint. Is this the time and place to address that? No objections or?
City administrator, can we?
I think if you guys like to hear him out.
Does council have any objections to hearing? Okay, not seeing any objections?
Okay, so, in regards to the property itself, and I know that property use expires and this hasn't been considered this for a number of times, but when this property was converted from a residential home to business offices and there was a lot more people working there and on a daily basis, there was a lot more people coming in and out of that property. I mean, you can look at the fifty-two parking spaces that we have there in the back and additional in the background. So, I understand that things expire and so forth from zoning and planning purposes, but in terms of the impact of traffic that's going to be there now compared to what it was in the past, I don't think there'd be a big difference. The other thing to consider is that we're working with Blue Elephant who is trying to move their organization from Pepperell Square to North Street. They've outgrown their, that place there, so the relief of impact or traffic impact in Pepperell Square is going to be quite considerable moving them from there to North Street. Just something to keep in consideration. And also, the supporting a local business that's been here for ten-plus years with Blue Elephant, we think brings to the table a public benefit as well. That also being said, I wanted to see if we can have a discussion as to how we might be able to offset some of those fees with other ways of public benefit. We've already talked about how we would support Rotary Club and allowing the space to be used for Rotary Club meetings. I understand that there's a meeting shortage, a meeting space shortage here in the city, we're willing to work with the city for maybe small city meetings to be held there. I was even thinking like maybe during the summertime, maybe Memorial Day to Labor Day, we can do some kind of farmer's market in the back there. The space is big enough where we can clean it up and do some kind of farmer's market for, for the community. I'm just trying to figure out ways to offset any additional costs that we have to get this project going and I don't know, again, I didn't know if this was the place to have that conversation, you know? We understand there has to be something, but we also think that we bring to the table a lot of public benefit that's not financial, if you will.
Do we have any questions or comments? Councillor Berman?
Yeah, thank you madam deputy mayor. Yeah, as I was reading over the packet and prepared to come here tonight, I was reflecting on our conversation at the last meeting, or maybe with the first one, where we talked about the public benefit needed for a contract zone. It strikes me that there are two types of public benefits a contract zone might bring. One is a direct public benefit, such as some land being donated to the city, a new road being built behind a business, or something like traffic impact fees. But equally, it strikes me that there are indirect public benefits by something like a contract zone, and that could be by providing needed services to the citizens of our city and/or relieving traffic in one high-traffic location and moving it to another, or simply enhancing life for citizens in the city of Saco by the existence of a business, property or service. And I was thinking about that and thinking about the intended use of this property, a historic property on North Street, one to provide meeting space, one to provide a needed venue. I think there are indeed some inherent city benefits, as pointed out by Mr. Arkand, some benefits inherent in the project for the citizens of Saco. And so, my plan was to raise this discussion anyway and ask whether a traffic impact fee was really needed in order to provide that public benefit, or if the project itself didn't provide sufficient public benefit. And so, I think to get that discussion moving, I would like to move to waive the traffic impact fee altogether, which would involve striking section three dot J dot E.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor or an amendment on the floor by councillor Berman to strike the impact fees in section three J E. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Purdy. Any discussion or comments? Councillor Gunn?
Thank you madam deputy mayor. And to follow up on Mr. Khan's comments and councillor Berman's comments, I guess this question is really more for the city planner or the city administrator. Gentlemen's asking about to have these fees waived or the very least mitigated, you know, reduced, however you want to term it, for services provided. Now, obviously, nothing's moved yet because we're at the end of the process and nothing's actually happened. So, my procedural question would be, before I would vote one way or the other on amendment to just eliminate the fees, is what would be the procedure in this? Would we wait to see what actually happens with the new establishment? Would we, would we charge the fees and be able to refund them later on? Just what is the actual procedure that we would have going forward at this point, assuming we didn't waive the fees outright?
Director Prescott, do you have a reply for that?
If, if any, for that matter.
I did explain to Ted in the office earlier today that he could bring forward his request to speak with council, it's council's purview. However, there will be some traffic review at some point during the conditional use review and whether a fee gets assessed at that point, it probably wouldn't be twelve thousand dollars and change, but there'd probably be some fee assessed with moving traffic to that location. We would have a little more detail potentially about the conditional use standards when we're looking at that, where this is a little early on for a traffic impact fee. And as far as waiving any traffic impact fees, there's no requirement under contract zone to have a traffic impact fee. I am, there are some requirements under the site plan and conditional use standards. And a shameless plug is we have put in a traffic infrastructure study through the budget, a request for funding for that, so we can start answering these questions more holistically on traffic impact fees throughout the city.
Yeah, go ahead, councillor Gunn.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question, so again, procedurally, we get to the end of the conditional use, gentleman's charged the twelve thousand, if the city or staff, in your judgment, found that there was, there was a use and, you have to forgive me for lacking the terminology here though, if, if it wasn't worth the twelve thousand, could we as a city refund the gentleman any of that money or is it basically just make the decision now and that's it?
It's, if you want it as part of the contract zone, you have to make the decision now. So, the request to staff was to come up with a cost to offset Franklin Street signalization that was reasonable relative to traffic impact for the applicant. So, that's what staff reported on. It's up to council during your review process whether or not to accept it or not as part of the contract zone process.
But as you stated, there could be a traffic study done down the road outside of what planning or councils are proving that may have a small fee.
So, the applicant will still have to go through conditional use review, so we'll review traffic at the planning board level as part of that, so there could be a traffic impact fee assessed at that time.
And that would be a fee that would, pardon me, would be independent of any fee that's opposed tonight, so like if later on, there was a fee that we could not sort of just assume that, or just count that first fee towards that second fee? Am I following that?
I don't know that we would look at counting a first fee toward a second fee, this would be a little bit outside of the planning board's review, this would be up to the city council's review.
Okay, okay.
Councillor Archer?
Yes, thank you deputy mayor. While I'm supportive of not adding an impact fee, I am concerned if we used a term as presented waived, because then I would say, not him, but one could argue that we waived the fee completely to include any post-impact fees. I would rather have this just deleted and not mentioned at all.
Just a point of order, my motion was to strike it altogether.
Oh, yeah, I had heard waived, so. Sorry, okay, perfect.
The motion is to strike section three J E in its entirety.
That's, then I'm, I'm good with that one. I had heard the word waived and I was worried about that, so.
Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. So, I mean, I proposed this several weeks ago. I think, if my count is correct, I think I've participated in about fourteen contract zones since my time on council or getting up here. And I've always found it troubling at times where I really believe if, if the ask here is for relief from the zoning ordinance, that everybody else has to adhere to in that zone, there should be some form of public benefit. I've, I've asked several different councils to have this incorporated into the contract zone ordinance. We've yet to address the contract zone ordinance. So, when looking at this particular item or ask, I looked at, you know, well, what public benefit could there be? And right away, it came, you know, to fruition for me, I was like, well, I know that we're going to have to signalize that. We are already signalizing the Jenkins Road at the cost of hundreds of thousands of dollars on Saco taxpayers. Clearly, this is probably going to cost hundreds of thousands. I highly, or I didn't expect this applicant to, to pay even close to the majority of it. When dealing, or when working with staff, I asked for a reasonable fee in my mind, it was less than what's been proposed twice now, but I wanted something that was professionally developed, not a number I pulled out of my mind. And that's what city staff has presented. I think when I initially presented this, I was also willing to phase in the payments over several years if that was, you know, helpful to the applicant. But I remain concerned that we continue to look at these contract zones in vacuums and while we like the applicant, which I think they're going to do a great job there and I think it is a benefit to the public, but then we also have applied impact fees. Up on, on Main Street, for example, there was a contract zone that cost hundreds of thousands in order to do the signalization and the realignment. And, and I've heard those same people in my ear saying, well, you made us do it, why didn't you make others? So, I've always tried to look at this as an issue of fairness. And in, in the past, you know, I've got creative, as councillor Berman mentioned, I just recently, a year and a half ago or so, was able to acquire, not an insignificant easement, actually it's deeded rights to a potential access road that this community has been looking for for twenty-plus years. So, in that case, it was a land gift, which was huge, in my personal opinion. Other times, it's been trail networks or extensions of trails. I mean, their ecology school has both that and a commitment to provide education to our students. So, I understand the burden, you know, it is on a small business owner, but at the same time, I think that we should apply a standard, you know, throughout. And while I recognize it's, it's not part of the ordinance, we have throughout history in the city of Saco required something, and this was my attempt. So, I'm certainly amenable to reducing the fee and, like I said, stretching it out over a period of time. I'm also open to, you know, what other councillors suggest as a public benefit, but this seemed like low-hanging fruit to me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Councillor Hatch?
Thank you deputy mayor. As a compromise here, and let me just clarify Emily with you, when, when the applicant goes through the conditional use discussion at the planning board, it's likely a number will come from that exercise relative to traffic impact?
Yes, we would look at the details of the traffic and then we'd determine with the planning board if a traffic impact fee is appropriate. And that's why we, when we have a broader city study, citywide study, we'll be able to actually point to a better process to assigning traffic impact fees.
Which is what councillor Johnston's alluding to, so that's, that's a good piece as well. So, in my head, I'm thinking as a compromise, can we approve the fee that's on the table or the conditional use determined fee, whichever is lower? And, and that gives him, the applicant, an opportunity to benefit from what could happen at, at the planning board level. Sounds like that number might come in a little lower than what we're talking about here and that's kind of what my motivation is.
Should I drop? I think that's a great question, it's a good suggestion, but I really recommend that the council just stick to one number, get it concrete in the contract zone for us and then we can move on.
I would just additionally point out, and it's Cole Prescott, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the attempt here is tying this impact to the signalization, not the traffic impact, which is what the conditional use permit deals with. So, it's, in essence, it's two different fees. It's, it's likely there, there will be a fee for the conditional use regardless, I could be wrong, but this attempt was specific to the signalization or whatever other improvement city staff sees needed in the area. It could be, you know, whatever, even, even pedestrian upgrades.
Councillor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I understand the issue of fairness and past precedent and I agree, those do create some tricky issues. I also have difficulty though believing that the small number of employees that this company is going to bring in is going to contribute significantly to the need for the signalization or other upgrades. It also, you know, by nature of being here in a final reading for contract zone, has demonstrated its unique nature, which is why it's being allowed to deviate from the zoning in the underlying area and indeed offers, you know, again, as I said, some indirect public benefits as to its very existence. It sounds like the traffic impact fee will be assessed at a later time, later in the process, which will offset some of the costs that, you know, produces, you know, by its nature. So, I think I'd like to keep support for my motion to waive section three J E. Sorry, not waive, strike section three J E, let's be precise.
Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. Again, not to get into, into an in-depth back and forth, but this impact isn't just related to the employees that are there on, on the regular. isn't just related to the employees that are there on the regular. We're talking about an increase of individuals going to the site, right? And at times, based on your own motion, there'll be up to 75 people on a Saturday, all likely arriving at the same time, creating issues at that intersection that already exist, to the point where the state has deemed it needs to be signaledized in the future. So I just wanted to clarify why, right? I'm not singling out just this business and their employees. It's about the impact of the neighborhood and that corridor. Thank you.
May I make a recommendation or consideration? We certainly have a dollar amount tagged here for the $12,855. However, it is in council's purview to, if there's a lower fee, that can still go to the Franklin Street signalization that council feels is appropriate and the applicant feels is appropriate. Perhaps there'd be a middle ground there and we wind up doing something similar to what Counselor Hatch suggested, where some portion of the fee is paid on contract zone, and then we will look at the rest under conditional use review. So if you wanted to look at maybe an $8,000 fee, I know Counselor Johnson also mentioned he was looking at a lower amount or considering a lower amount when he originally brought this up. Other contract zones I look through, we, the City of Saco has historically done anywhere from $0 to $5,000 to $40,000 to $50,000. Some of those are one-time fees, some of those are annually. So you have some, usually they're just round amounts. We have some general relative nexus to what we are supporting with this fee. But it seems like maybe $8,000 could be a number that could still support Franklin Street signalization, and then we could work on conditional use review.
Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you. I think this is more where I'm comfortable. Again, when I recognize there could be a fee down the road, I would like justice to be nice and clean. Clean it up now and just come up with the magic number. And then we can hold it together because Counselor Johnson is right, that 75 attendees can be on site, eight employees, you're talking 83. You're talking North Street right there. And that's also the same time that we have the public events, like softball tournaments and all that. So that's, a lot of that space is already used. And I don't believe you can park on the left side, where the side of the fire department. So you're really only, you've only got that parking on the streets, off-streets, and right there near that park. Is $6,000 amenable? Again, we're cutting it in about half, and this is to the applicant. Again, there has to be some kind of cost, because the cost gets put onto the taxpayers. But it's also not $12,000, which was just kind of caught, or just was explained.
Again, not understanding how the whole process works, okay? So it was my understanding that we come to a number today that we wouldn't be hit through, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that during the conditional use, we, the traffic impact fee would already be established for whatever we decide on tonight, and we don't have to go through it on conditional use. Is that correct?
There was still need to review of that.
Okay. So my concern is that we go through whatever we agree on today, whether it's $6,000 or $12,000 or $8,000, and then we get back into the conditional use aspect of it, and then we're hit with another fee. And, you know, my purpose tonight, and you guys are going to, I understand what Counselor Johnson was saying, is that, you know, you want to set an ordinance that is fair and equitable to everybody with all different contract zones. My intention tonight was to have the conversation with city to plead our case, if you will. You know, I don't know, we can agree to that and move forward. But at some point, the cost of the project is, that Blue Elephant and myself are going to have to weigh whether this is worth it to us or not, you know? And if we continue to get hit with these other fees, it might say, you know, it's not worth it to do this. And, you know, we're just small businesses. We can't afford to take this kind of thing. So I'm willing to work, and it's been good working with the council and the city staff to figure out something that's amenable. But my goal tonight was also to bring to the table that whether there is a land donation, which is not a, which in the end is a financial benefit to the community, or other benefits that we think we bring to the table, meaning keeping an established business here that's been here for a long time, having a, upgrading a facility that's been vacant for a number of years, having a good landlord in the city that's going to take care of property, and then the other things like working with rotary clubs or offering the property for public use and like farmers market or whatever the case may be. I don't know if all those things can be addressed tonight. I'm just expressing my concerns.
Does that answer your questions, Counsel Archer?
Some of it. With what I'm hearing, again, we're going to be creating a legal document, and we're doing a lot of on-the-fly discussions right now, just because that's how it's presented. I'm actually thinking that maybe we should table this by one meeting to allow these details to get solidified. Go ahead. Counselor can speak.
Counselor Gunn?
Thank you. I just want procedural wise, though, just for the public's benefit, though, because once you make a table, a motion cuts off debate, though. The point I wanted to make was, I'm not comfortable, and I don't think it's prudent for us to actually, like, negotiate at this point, considering that we have a clean, a couple clean, a clean motion on the table and the final motion itself. And the alteration, to Counselor Johnson's point, I mean, halves what the original impact fee was going to be. And if I understood Ms. Prescott earlier, though, that if there is a future impact fee, or future, once conditional use is over, we can, we have the power to waive that, one way or the other. Did I follow that correctly? If the gentleman's, you know, passed to pay a fee, and we, in our judgment, later on view that, you know, if there's a fee out there, we can say, no, he's already paid it, or paid a fee?
So I suppose that the applicant could come back and ask for a change of the fee, but I would encourage us to...
It's legally possible.
It's legally possible to come back and amend. But usually, when applicants leave with conditions, we want them to fulfill those conditions and not come back and get amendments if we can help it.
Certainly. And to your point, I guess you want, it would be prudent to have an item or a figure on the table, one that we, when there is a motion on the table for right now, which is to more than half that fee, at least I think it is pretty close, though. You have to forgive my arithmetic on that one. I think...
The amendment on the floor right now is to strike the fee.
Strike the fee? Okay, so we're now, it's two amendments. All right, sorry. Okay, well, the second one, I mean, the first one, you know. So I would think it would be prudent to just vote on these motions as they are. And I said the applicant is free, like any other business owner to come forward later if they're seeking remediation for any further fees. I think that would be the cleanest way to do this, especially considering, you know, we've gone through the process, we're at the last stage. No point in really delaying it, one way or the other, especially if, that there's going to be no material difference whether you pay a fee now or you pay a fee in six months. And to Counselor Johnson's point, we can be probably structured any way that's your benefit. I think that'd be the cleanest way to go about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, concerns? Okay, not seeing any. So we have the amendment on the floor right now to, by Counselor Berman, seconded by Counselor Purdy, and that is to strike Section 3JE of the fee. Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Nay.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Okay, amendment fails, four to two. Back to the main motion. Counselor Archer?
Uh, where are my table? Do table the...
Any other additional questions or comments? Counselor Johnston?
Yeah, I'm still amenable to reducing this fee. I guess my gut instinct, several weeks ago, when I had a number in mind, maybe I should have just thrown that out at that time, which was $6,000. So again, we're having this, if council is amenable to that.
Are you making an amendment?
Yes, please.
Second.
Okay, Counselor Johnson has placed an amendment to make the impact fee $6,000, seconded by Counselor Archer. Any questions? Okay, roll call, vote. Counselor, oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. I'm uncomfortable with, I'm uncomfortable with, as has been said, negotiating this on the dais. Seems like we're starting to pull numbers out of thin air. The, uh, I can't remember previous contract zones that we've approved, if there were traffic impact fees or not. My knowledge of the history of some of these are past contract zones is lacking in that respect. I'm just, it seems to me that if there's going to be a future conditional use discussion at the planning board and that traffic impact fees can be applied there, it seems like we're double-dipping. And I just don't want to do that to a, to a small business, having run a small business. I'm not sure where to go with this, so I'm...
Go ahead, you have the floor.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna motion to table this, because I'm, I'm not comfortable coming up with a number out of thin air.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to table? Okay. Okay, so there is a motion to table on the floor. Roll call, vote. Counselor, second, I'm sorry. Okay, so not hearing a second?
No, second. I didn't.
Oh, Counsel Archer? Okay, roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion fails, four to two.
So we called this a traffic impact fee, and maybe that was planning staff's terminology that we used. But in the past, we have requested public benefit fees for different contract zones in round amounts of $5,000 or other amounts. Sometimes we've requested 40 or 50, based on best estimates of some impact to the area. So you have the right, because this is a contract zone, to work with the applicant on a fee that will be written into the contract zone. And then to Counselor Johnson's point, what we will look at on conditional use review is the traffic impact to the whole area, not to a specific section of signalization necessarily. So I don't know if Public Works Director Fox has anything to provide here. I see him sitting here as well. So planning and public works often work together on these types of projects.
Any questions for Director Fox, or do you have?
I was perfectly comfortable at my seat in the back and letting you discuss this, but I feel like I do have some value-added things to add to your discussion point to hopefully come to a resolution tonight. So as some background, over the last five or 10 years, we've identified Route 112 as a trouble spot, a, you know, a traffic issue for us. For a long time, we were going it alone with local dollars, picking away at millions of dollars' worth of improvements. So a study was done years ago with our traffic engineer, very high level, to assess per, like in a new subdivision, any cars that passed through the 112 corridor would pay an impact fee. So depending on how far or how much of their traffic was coming through that corridor, they could pay anywhere from $500 to $1,000 per housing unit towards future 112 traffic mitigation. Nailing down a number right now is such a moving target, because we now have the turnpike bringing a $40 million improvement that helps some things in the corridor, hurts others. We have large multifamily, you know, subdivisions proposed that could contribute towards some of these improvements. But some of these improve, a signalization of that intersection could cost one, $1.2 million, similar to what we're doing at Jenkins Road. If that all fell on another applicant that it's been discussed with, that'd be over $4,000 per housing unit. So I can't answer the question as to how you frame what this project means to you individually as, how many housing units is it the equivalent of? But I think it puts some context to it, that if we're asking people building houses to put $500 to $1,000 per unit towards our 112 traffic corridor issues, and still putting a lot of local taxpayer dollars, I think the fact that you're discussing a fee is reasonable. If you were to simply put language of $6,000, and that payment could be included towards any traffic impact fee harder numbers that get sorted out further in the process as it goes through these other things, it can, you know, say the number does end up being $12,000, the $6,000 could go towards that. But at least that's at a later date, sorted out by professionals, arguing over trip counts and where the cars are coming and going from. So you'd be essentially collecting a $6,000 minimum from this project to put towards a public benefit, while allowing it to count towards a fee that could be higher. We don't have to know that. It's not your job to know what that total impact fee could be. So I don't know if everything I just said is legal and will bear out through the process, but I believe it is. To say, the minimum is $6,000 for a troubled corridor, and the rest will be sorted out as you go through the rest of the approval process. So just a suggestion and a little background on how we've handled traffic in the corridor.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you for those clarifying remarks. I have something to say, and then I have a clarifying question, I think, for staff. I don't think we want to table the motion. We've already voted not to. We want to send the applicant home with a contract tonight. We've already voted to not approve striking the fees altogether, so there is going to be some fee. We've struggled with a $21,000 and a $12,000 number, so it's probably going to be something smaller than that. Counselor Johnston has $6,000 on the table. It seems to be a reasonable compromise point for this group. So I hope we can build some support around that, so that we can move on to the next items on our agenda, and send the poor applicant home with a contract zone. I do have a question, though, because it seemed like City Planner Cole Prescott earlier said applying a fee now and having that count towards a fee later might be a problematic issue, and it might be better to keep the two clean so as not to cause confusion later on in the process. I hear Public Works Director Fox suggesting that maybe we could apply a fee now that would apply towards later fees. I'm also aware that we don't have any language from legal about exactly how we would word that in order to accomplish it. It's not part of our suggested motions. And I'm wondering if you guys can clarify maybe what best practice would be in this situation, and come up with a common staff recommendation that we can move forward with.
So the question that was asked of me, I believe, was offsetting the cost so that we would reduce the impact fee going forward, and we can't reduce the impact fee. What Public Works Director Fox suggests is to pay at least this, and then it could increase by this. So that seems fine. And then as far as the, if you had an amendment, you could just take out the $12,855 and put in the $6,000, I believe.
Which I believe is a motion on the table right now, if I've been following.
There is, there is some precedent where this has happened with other off-site improvements, say with sewer impact fees, where if they're contributing significant enough off-site improvements to the system, that does get balanced out with the remaining fee they pay. So there is some precedent for this method. Thank you.
Counselor Archer?
Staff, I think an amendment could happen here, and it's just more about wordsmithing it to the effect of, I'm trying to take what was just stated, but... I'm trying to take what was just stated, but we're at 6,000, that is the motion, but if we add something to the frame, and again, help, help me with the language because it is a legal document. 6,000, a non-refundable $6,000. You picked that word, the right term. And then for the backend, shall be a, can be applied, may be applied as a credit to future something. Like, that's, I don't have the motion because we're coming up right now and it's legalese, so I want to make sure it's accurate. But there can be a motion that does that by applying it as a credit, but also saying that it's non-refundable, so there's not, that kills the low limit. So, if the project's only four, we still get six. But if it's nine, then there's a $3,000, there's 6,000 credit against the nine. So, there'd be a $3,000. Again, I'm just trying to wordsmith it correctly. Because the other option is we just do six.
A side note is I'm really looking forward to jumping into the contract zone ordinance revision. So, staff has a better idea of what the council is looking for before we get to this point, so.
Madam Deputy Mayor, just a point of order while they discuss. I don't know that anybody actually seconded Counselor Johnston's motion, did they?
We did not. He would have to bring it back. The table motion overrode that and he would have to make the motion a second time.
Thank you.
Do you have the information or do you want to take a small recess to find it or?
No, I think we're good.
Thank you. Good, okay.
So, um, E, where it says because of traffic impact to the area, applicant shall pay a traffic impact fee of 6,000 to the city of Saco prior to building permit issuance for interior renovations. This fee may offset any additional traffic impact fees assessed during the planning board review process.
Counselor Berman?
I move to amend Section 3JE as read by City Planner Cole Prescott.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any more additional questions or comments? Counselor Gunn?
Is, is the motion just made and seconded to lower it to 6,000? Because I'm, I'm confused at what just happened. You have to forgive me, I'm not a, you know.
The, the amendment
Yes.
has just been made to lower it to 6,000 with the conditions and rules
Okay.
that Director Prescott has stepped forth. They actually change in the contract.
Okay. My follow, my question, I was gonna, if, can I? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. My question was for the public's benefit and for my benefit at this point. Can you remind the council how you arrived, how we arrived at that 12,000 fee that was still potentially on the table if this amendment's voted down?
So, without a broader holistic study of the city, we went and looked at the cost of the Franklin Street Signalization Project, which the cost estimate that we were aware of is about $450,000. It's probably going to be a lot higher than that. We just really looked at some of the material costs and the general construction and that's high level. And then we got to a per cost trip of $4,285 based on the recent traffic movement permit reviews that have happened in the area with the DOT. And we come out with a revised traffic impact fee of 12,855 and that's based on 3:00 PM peak hour trips, one in and one and two out. And that is to quantify for the, to account, account for the new employees that will be added to the existing site. The 21,000 was considering all employees at the site. But it was the best data we had and we put that number forward.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Cole Prescott, for the council's benefit. Given that that's the metric that they, that they used and to Mr. Fox's points though, I think it's a prudent way to go considering the impact fees and the, I mean, the amount of money that's going to be necessary though. Still 12,000 is a lot though, but it's 6,000, I mean, kind of feels like a little drop in the bucket when we have, you know, some major issues that we have to deal with there. And I think overall, it might be prudent to go that way. So, I would ask my fellow counselors to consider that before their vote. Thank you.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, as, as just noted, I, I didn't arbitrarily come up with a number, though we have arrived back at that number. So, yeah, sorry if it makes people uncomfortable, but I have to remind all of us, that's why we're elected. And I've watched far too long where we pass the buck off to the taxpayers year after year after year. And while this is a small insignificant number in the grand scheme of things, I think it's a step in the right direction to start ensuring that we actually go after these costs and not just putting it on the average taxpayer that's not really increasing the, the impact to those areas. Thank you.
Okay. Not seeing any additional hands. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes 5-1. Brings us back to the original motion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 6-0. Thank you for all your help on that one, Director Prescott. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Arkin. Have a good night. Okay, that now brings us to item E. One reading, mobile food vending unit policy. And that is Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. With the popularity of mobile food trucks and no city ordinance or policy dealing with mobile food vending units, city staff felt the need to put together a policy which would provide the following. An opportunity for mobile food vending units to operate in designated areas, to give staff the provisions needed for compliance for mobile vending units. Staff recommends approval. Be it ordered, the city council approved the mobile food vending units policy. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Berman. We do have Economic Development Director Tracy Dischardens. She does have a change in the packet that she would like to read.
Good evening, Tracy Dischardens, Economic Development Director. In the packet, and you'll notice under the, the size that was added. Make sure I get the right one.
Page 99.
And it should be on page 99 in your packet. But it will be on page two of the mobile vending policy. So, item number two, size of the unit allowed. It had, we had changed that to maximize two parking spaces. And then I had 20 by 40, one parking space measures 10 by 20. Not realizing that we don't want a 20-foot wide. So, what I'd like to do is delete the 20 by 40 and just have it read maximum size of two parking spaces. One parking space measures 10 by 20.
Do we have any questions for Director Dischardens on that? Counselor Gunn?
Just so we're clear though, because we include the actual measuring space though. So, if we have a situation where there's a discrepancy between the paint and the size, the size, the 10 by 20 will be the legalese. So, we don't have a frivolous sort of, you know, hey, that's inside that chipped off paint or something like that. It's what, I guess, I foresee things, because if I'm thinking it, you know, there's someone out there thinking it, you know.
You are absolutely correct, you know. Give them an inch and they take a yard.
Exactly. So, legalese though, the, the measurements will.
Yes, then this comes from the code enforcement officer that he feels that that's sufficient size enough as far as. So, if somebody had a trailer and had a vehicle that they were towing within the two parking spaces, that would allow them for that, that space.
Good, good, thank you.
Any additional questions? Counselor Archer?
So, that will need to be an amendment though.
It will be.
So, I'll make an amendment that we delete 20 by 40 identified in definitions two.
Second.
Yep. Second, a motion made by Counselor Archer to delete the 20 by 40 space requirement in the packet on the policy. Second by Counselor Johnston. Okay, roll call vote on the amendment. Counselor.
De, um, excuse me.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, Deputy Mayor, I just would like to point out that I just want counsel to know that we will be coming back on the fees because we hadn't set the fees in there. And also, another recommendation from counsel was on page three, 100 of your packet, was a returnable deposit fee of, and we didn't have a dollar amount, so I was trying to get some guidance from counsel. So, this would be for cleanup. It was suggested that when they come for their license, that they also do a deposit. So, when we inspect the area, if it's not cleaned, then the city would keep that deposit if we had to go behind and clean up after them. So, I needed some guidance from counsel on what you wanted to set that fee at.
So, should we handle this amendment on the floor first?
Yes, I think so. And then would the fee be in a fee schedule discussion versus the policy?
Tracy, is this a fee currently listed or a fee schedule?
No.
No, okay. So, we could arbit, we could create it now and then amend it when we do the fee schedule again. So, 250 seems reasonable.
Point of order, this is a different discussion than amendment on the floor.
Let's handle the amendment.
Okay, so we're going to go through, we're going to vote on the First Amendment to delete the 20 by 40. Roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, motion, amendment passes 6-0. Now, we have the discussion of the returnable deposit fee. And we would need to set either a dollar value in that within the policy or through bringing up fee schedules. Counselor Berman?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Can we amend the language to say returnable deposit fee as listed in the fee schedule is required with license will be refunded upon inspection of site, allowing city staff time to, to set the fee in the fee schedule?
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Berman, second by Counselor Archer. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any hands. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes 6-0. Okay, that brings us back to the main motion.
And just, Tracy, that concluded staff's issues to bring before the council for clarification. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, back to the moment, uh, main motion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Johnston, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So, when we discussed this a week ago or, yeah, thereabouts, I guess this was confusion or oversight on, on my part because I, I had believed this would be moving forward as an ordinance versus policy. There is sizable difference, to be honest. You know, where policies are, are guidelines and, and ordinance is our actual municipal law. But I also recognize that, you know, staff has needed something to, to go about, not just the food trucks, but also the, the issues with the sidewalks. So, I'm okay with adopting this as a policy, but I would just ask that we bring this back after budget this summer so we can go about the process where we have public input and take a deeper dive because there are other areas that I'd like to address. And I think this needs to be codified as, as law in the city versus a policy. So, I just wanted that to be known to council that I would look forward to bringing this back. And I do have an additional change I'd suggest to this policy under additional requirements for units located or operated on public streets. Item two, we lay out what streets this would be allowed on. We've added Water Street. I would additionally like to add under C, Store Street. So, I guess that would be an amendment.
Okay, there's an amendment on the floor by Counselor Johnston to add Store Street
I'll second.
to the list of approved streets.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Counselor Berman. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, amendment to add Store Street passes 6-0. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I concur with Counselor Johnston's comments that I, I appreciate the policy is needed and I appreciate that it's here in front of us. I, I do think there are some other larger issues we'd like to discuss as a city around the issue of food trucks. I have a, a personal interest in, in seeing them at the beach, which requires some zoning amendments. And there may be some other issues too. I also want to just express a, a particular thanks for increasing the number of food trucks allowed in public space, on public property. I appreciate that and they could go a long way. But I do look forward to additional discussions on this at some point in the future.
City Minister Dr. Kenrath?
Yeah, thank you. Just, I think it's a fine idea to talk about this in ordinance and we will bring it back forward. I think the one consideration was as the weather gets warmer, we're hitting April next week. These requests are coming in very soon to get, to get going on this. So, I think in the interest of time, also, a policy for this moment may be suitable, but we will bring back discussion for a deeper dive and look at ordinance.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, my, my comments weren't intended to be any criticisms. Like, as I indicated, it kind of was my own oversight too. I, I would have caught it last week or at least questioned it last week. But I, I would agree, you know, as time is of, is of the essence because I've heard it from both the food truck venues and, you know, of course, the sidewalk issue. So, I just would look to bring this back sometime this summer. Thank you.
Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And to piggyback on that, I think for the public's benefit, it makes perfect sense that maybe at the end of the summer, beginning of the autumn, once we've actually had a season with a policy in place that will allow and encourage food trucks, we won't be, rather than debating in a vacuum where these things haven't happened yet and it just becomes a game of what if, what if, what if, we'll actually see how the bare bones policy going into it works. And therefore, the public can come back for a three-meeting ordinance debate though, if there are things that need to be fine tuned. At the same time, you know, it's, uh, let's be hopeful and be positive going into this though, that, I mean, it's something new and not everyone's going to be happy going in. But at the same time, it's a good first step to try to, for lack of a better term, get a piece of this business that has been, you know, Cogdons down the road in Portland. Unfortunately though, the folks up in Portland though, because of some new regulations on the East End, a lot of those food trucks are going to be probably looking for, for a greener pastures though, considering how, you know, and for good reason though, considering that there's too much, there's too many food trucks and too small of a space. So, we can get them down here, I think we're going to have a, a great situation on our hands. That's, that's my hope. That'll call me an optimist.
Okay, not seeing any other hands raised. Back to the main motion as amended. Counselor Archer? Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes six zero. Okay, so now that brings us to item F, one reading of the sidewalk vending policy, and that is Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. Since the pandemic has become advantageous for businesses to extend services in front of their downtown businesses because there is no city ordinance or policy addressing public sidewalk vending, city staff felt the need to put together a policy which would provide the following: An opportunity for downtown businesses to extend their operation on the public sidewalk from April 1st to December 1st, to give staff the provisions needed for compliance from businesses operating on public sidewalk. Staff recommends approval, be it ordered that the city council approve the sidewalk vending policy and move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Archer. Any questions or comments? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. I just would have one, again, my comments previously would apply to this, but I would only have one amendment to this under general requirements. Number seven lays out the distance or the width that is needed on the sidewalk. I would amend that to be at least four feet in width.
Okay, an amendment has been made by Councilor Johnston to change under general requirements, number seven, from three feet to four feet. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion or comment? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. So ADA laws, I believe it's three feet, but based on my own research, every ADA publication I have found and/or advocacy group recommends four feet for guide dogs and people in crutches or walkers. They actually recommend five feet for wheelchair-bound individuals. So given that I've witnessed three feet over the last two years not be adequate for many people on Main Street, I would, you know, suggest that we go to the four feet and see how that works again as a pilot for the summer. I certainly will have my ears open for several individuals that I'm sure to hear from. Again, I just remind everybody, as I stated last week, there is legal case law. It's a Choche versus Long Beach, which was reviewed and guarantees pedestrian access as a right by federal disabilities laws. So we have to be mindful of that. Again, like I said last week, I have had at least one individual that has come forward to me with exactly how they would pursue a legal claim against the city. That's not their intent, but they are well-versed in this area. So I would just, you know, suggest we be mindful of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And as sort of a conversation point, because I'm addressing you, though, but in response to, you know, really to Councilor Johnston's comment, would it be prudent to go up to the five feet, as you mentioned, for wheelchair-accessible or, I mean, just the configuration of our sidewalks? Is that a sort of a not practical? I mean, I'd ask for any staff input on this, though. Just, like I said, like to your point, though, if we are treading on some waters, though, that could be, you know, get us into legal trouble, even though we do have the burden of the law on our side, with four feet, though, would five feet be too much? Just as a discussion point.
Councilor Berman?
If staff must respond to Councilor Gunn's comment first, that's okay with me.
You'd have to look at the size of the sidewalks. I think if you try to go up too high, then really what you're doing is you're not going to allow the businesses to have outdoor dining. You'll literally cut them off from that. So I would be careful as far as on the feet.
I would second that. I think five feet, you're getting into some territory where is it even worth allowing them outside dining?
To that point, is four going to put us in a situation where it's not practical?
Well, I guess we'll ask Public Works Director, how wide are our sidewalks?
That would be prudent, yes.
Director Fox? Yes.
Sidewalk, twelve feet. The area with the bump outs and destruction, I mean, we need five feet clear. So you have that behind the pole and along where railing or something might stick up. We do recommend only five feet, but we don't want you, for ADA compliance, go less than five. Twenty-five feet clear would be...
But the question is that if we go that far, then we're not allowing outside dining?
I don't know how this allows five feet to allow them to actually go through. I don't know if it is on ADA.
Three feet.
Do you want to go a lot more? I don't know how, I don't know how we're going to make it for the public to have me on Main Street. We could look at some examples of where, I don't know, like the bit is in front of...
Twelve feet, thereabouts, twelve feet.
Could we...
Double wide sidewalk.
I mean, if we're going to come back on this anyways, we're doing a pilot, could we kind of be with someone in the middle?
Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. That was going to be my suggestion. Exactly, if we find three feet inadequate, at five feet, we're concerned about the availability of the tables to the businesses. Perhaps four feet, as suggested by Councilor Johnston, is a fair compromise. And if it proves inadequate as a policy, we can always change it in one reading once again. So I would support the motion to make it four feet.
Okay, so the amendment on the floor is to change three feet to four feet in width size. Any additional comments or questions? Roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes six zero. Okay, back to the main motion as amended. Roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Okay, that is the last item on our action items. Genite item number 10, new business. There is no new business this evening. Item 11, we have administrative update.
All right, thank you. First, on the auditorium, again, AV update, we're happy to report that the ARPA-funded hybrid conversion capability of the City Hall auditorium is now complete. Thank you to the diligent work of our communications department, our contractor Stone Mountain Sound, and the support of additional departments, IT facilities, public works, and code enforcement. The new acoustic echo canceling system has worked well in tests and allows us to make sure everyone participating can hear everyone else who is participating remotely, which is critical, obviously, to having a public meeting. So that capability is there if and when we need it and at your discretion. Upcoming agenda, as you heard earlier in the budget presentation, our next two meetings are completely consumed with budget presentations on 403 and 410. An update on the Army Corps of Engineers and the Jetty Project. I did hear from our project manager, Jen Falhouser, that the PPA is now being drafted and is underway. So that process is happening. She is also open to coming up here and at least visiting with some city officials, me and, you know, maybe the mayor and some others, but I'm also going to try to get her to do an update at a public meeting, hopefully a council meeting, but some sort of public meeting. But the good news is she is very open and amenable to coming up here and meeting with us, and I think is showing some genuine interest in the project and has assured us the PPA is currently being drafted, which is, again, I know, slow but remarkable progress. So we continue to move in the right direction. So I think rest assured, we remain with our foot on the gas and this is moving forward, although maybe slowly than some, more slowly than some may like. But, so I'll have more updates on that, but that is good news. The Sacco Tannery site on Flagpole Road, we got notice the EPA will be doing some water quality testing in the area. All impacted residents will receive notice individually from the EPA, but we did also want to put out that we have a website set up. If residents are seeking additional information or looking for more contact information, they can visit sacomaine.org/pfas. Lastly, I'm having my next session of city administrators' open office hours tomorrow, 3:28, 3:30 to 5:00, here on the second floor of City Hall. And of course, all local residents and business owners are encouraged to attend and share any of their thoughts, views, complaints, or whatever they may want to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for City Administrator Kenrath? Okay, not seeing any. That takes us to item 12, and that is council discussion and comment. Are there any discussion or comments from council? Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I just want to piggyback off Councilor Johnston's statement. I'd like to see on a workshop, a future workshop, contract zone discussion on that because we can identify certain parameters to find things. I think we've been wanting this for about two years, so it'd be nice to see if it's on a upcoming workshop, obviously not a high-pry item at the moment, but something to have a discussion on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any. That takes us to item 13, executive session. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, see Real Estate.
Motion has been made by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. To enter executive session, we will take a five-minute recess and we will be meeting in city administrator's office. Counselor Johnson? Motion to exit executive session passes six zero. There is no report this evening. And item 15 isn't adjourned. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Archer?
Johnston.
Johnston, I'm sorry. Second by Counselor Johnston. Will call vote, Counselor Archer?
Ooh, sorry. Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes six zero. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.